Ready? Okay, thank you. We need to approve the minutes from April 13th. I was not here, so look for somebody to make a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. That's his.
Thank you. Want a voice vote, or do you want a...
Oh, yes, I apologize. Vice Chair, Chairman Muthar?
I'm going to pass, I wasn't here for the meeting.
Okay. Vice Chair Schnack?
Yes.
Mr. Guttnick?
Yes.
Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
All right, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Would anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak for a case, against a case, address us at all, would you please rise and take the oath to tell the truth, please?
Do you swear from any statements you give this evening will be true to the best of your knowledge?
Thank you. John and Carson, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda. Just for note, there are a couple pieces of correspondence that have been provided to the commission, one regarding the athletic field case, as well as the case on Lacon.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll start with case number one, PZ-23-8. Marrakech Market, located at 3193 Hilliard Rome Road. Review and approval of assigned variance under the provisions of Hilliard Code Section 1129.08 to permit window signage to exceed 10% of the window area. I know this is a case coming back from last month.
So this is a case that was postponed at the last meeting. The site is located along Hilliard Rome Road in the Tin Apple Plaza, as shown in the blue bubble. This is an image of the storefront, so in particular, we're talking about the window signage that's located at the bottom of the windows. And at the last meeting, the applicant had a proposal, the commission requested that they work with staff to come up with something that was a little bit closer to the code requirement of 10%. Since that time, if you recall, we were talking about the four different areas of the signage. Since that time, they've actually removed a couple of the areas of signage to the right on the image, on the other side of the door. So this gives you a general view of the area that's been removed. So they're now at approximately slightly over 11%. So this is much lower than what we previously had before you. With that, the staff feels that the proposed alternative meets the general intent of the code, and the modifications are a compromise that was requested by the commission. And with that, we'd recommend approval with the condition as noted on the screen.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Sound like the compromise we were looking for? Okay, very good.
Do you want to document your photo as exhibit?
All of the photos are kept for record, so we record or keep all of the PowerPoints.
Thank you. And we just have the one condition. Is the applicant here this evening? If so, would you please approach the stand? State your name.
I'm Shafir Lasayed, and I'm here for Marrakech International Market.
Thank you for working with staff on this, we appreciate that.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
There's only one condition, and you saw that, that's just that you can't increase that without getting any kind of prior approval. Are you okay with that?
Yes, sir, I agree.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak for or against this case? Okay, hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair? I move to approve case one, PZ-23-8, Marrakech Market at 3193 Hilliard Rome Road, for the approval of assigned variance under the provisions of Hilliard Code Section 1129.08 to permit window signage to exceed 10% of the window area, with the condition that no additional increase in the area of window signage is permitted without approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Chairman Muthar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schnack?
Yes.
Mr. Guttnick?
Yes.
Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to case number two, PZ-23-14, 3637 LAC Property LLC at 3637 Lacon Road, for review and approval of a conditional use under the provisions of Hilliard Code Section 1123.03 and 1123.04 for building material and lumber supply, and 1123.17C for outdoor storage exceeding 10% of the total area of the site on 4.8 acres.
So this is a request for two conditional uses. We're looking at the properties located at the corner of Lacon Road and Edgewann Avenue. So it's the former Brunner Corporation site. You can see the two buildings that face onto Lacon, as well as the building that is located to the rear of that, and you can see the current site condition. What's proposed is to do a conditional use for lumber-related or construction-related use, as well as an outdoor storage area that would be associated with that use. The plans that are in your packet include the existing conditions. What's proposed is to remove the rear building, and then to also remove a couple of the building connectors that have been added on over time between the three buildings. So that would create the potential for an outdoor storage yard. This is looking down Lacon, at the northernmost building, and then moving further to the south. This shows you the southern building that would be maintained. This is moving around the corner with Edgewann Avenue, looking down Edgewann to the west. And then this is the existing truck dock, which would be maintained as part of the proposal. And then moving further to the west, you can see the building and the area that would be demolished and cleared to provide for the outdoor storage. As part of this, the applicant is also looking to remove significant amount of pavement along Edgewann Avenue, so that they can implement a 30-foot landscape buffer, and that as well would wrap around this area along the western property line. In your staff report, there is an image of the original plan that was submitted by the applicant. And so they had proposed to maintain the four curb cuts along Edgewann Avenue. The staff originally recommended the implementation of a one-way parking system with the removal of the dock that would allow for the removal of two curb cuts. Based on conversation with the applicant, they need that door, the bay door, for their operation. So what has been submitted is a modified plan that would remove the westernmost curb cut and extend landscaping around the side of the parking area toward the service yard. The service yard would be surrounded by fencing that meets code requirement. They'll also have additional screening on the fencing, so that all of the materials in the storage yard are not visible. And as noted on the screen, this would also resolve a number of property maintenance issues, which are currently pending on both properties. The staff finds that the proposed conditional use is generally consistent with the purpose and intent of the code, and that will not impede orderly development of the character of the surrounding area. This will also address many of the property maintenance issues that have been pending for quite some time. The staff recommends approval with the conditions as noted on the screen, and these are slightly different than was in your report, based on conversations with the applicant and the revised plan that we've shown on the screen here, that modifies the parking and the landscaping along Edgewann to provide more landscaping. We're modifying condition one to indicate that the western curb cut along Edgewann Avenue is removed, and then improvements are provided according to the revised site plan that we just showed on the screen. And then also adding a condition number five, that the southern curb cut on Lacon be repaired with concrete to meet engineering standards, subject to approval by the city engineer. And with that, it opened up to any questions?
I guess I'll start. You got an email today from a gentleman, it looks like you got it today, Carson, that was concerned about truck traffic.
Correct.
On Edgewann, I guess have we... Can I ask what staff's response to that is?
In your packet, the applicant did provide some expected levels of traffic. In their materials, it noted that they would generally have two deliveries inbound and six outbound by trucks, and then also to have somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen to 15 small trucks or small vehicles per day as well. Given some of the other M1 uses in the area, I feel that that's not a significant level of traffic, given the industrial uses along Lacon Road.
And there are existing docks, obviously, there that trucks have been using in the past.
The existing bay door with the loading dock has been there, so, you know, any use could go in there as a permitted use, and use that, you know, to whatever level or extent that they can.
Any other questions?
Don't really see that as being an issue, given the small number. We'd have to check with traffic to see if that's actually signed or not.
We'll ask the applicant to come up.
Good evening, Patrick Thornton with Sixmo, I represent the applicant. We're the design professional for the project, and I'm here for any questions that you have. It sounds like you guys have a fairly good understanding of what we're trying to do. We have worked closely with Carson and staff to develop a plan that helps buffer the use much better than it is currently, and still function well for the user.
All right. Carson, would you bring the list of conditions back up that you revised? We're going to need that at some point in time, too. The staff has worked with you on these conditions, and you're fine with all of them?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? You guys are easy tonight. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak for or against this case? If so, please approach the podium, please, and state your name.
Hi, my name's Lonnie Wells, and I own the property directly across the street at 4475 Edgewann. And we actually, Mom and Dad moved there back in mid-'60s. So, you know, I can remember playing across the street in the field before any of this was built years ago. My mom worked and retired from medics when they were there from day one, so, you know, I've been very, you know, aware of what's happened over there over the years. Still own the home there, not living there, but I still own the home. But I'm very concerned about, you know, the new company coming in, you know, I don't quite understand the business, you know, it's a building, you know, lumber, it's mentioned there, sand and gravel is mentioned. What kind of business are they? Are they a retailer, are they a distributor? You know, that's a, you know, I'm interested in knowing what type of business, because that affects the traffic. You mentioned semi-traffic, and you weren't aware of the problem. We do have parking on both sides of the street, and, you know, with, in the afternoon, we have the school that's on the other side of the street getting out. And the both sides of the street are lined with parents picking up the kids, so there's not a lot of room. And, you know, I personally feel that the semi-traffic through there is a hazard anyway for the kids. You know, the semis will come through there, they'll break the curb at the corner, because they're narrow streets, especially if you have cars parked there. And then trying to navigate into the one loading dock that's there, it's a problem. You know, I'd prefer to see, you know, if it ends up going through, the entrance would be off of Lacon, down on the other side of the new part of the building. You know, there's, you know, I think there's ample space over there to make a turnaround back there for the semis. But, you know, I'm still not clear on the type of product, the type of racking, is it going to be under roof? You mentioned about part of the building being demolished. I know that building's been neglected for years. And you mentioned that one loading dock, it's crumbling. I went by there today just to kind of look over the property. So it needs total, you know, torn out and redone. And with doing that, I think that I would look to do the truck entrance in another place, another area. So that's a concern, the traffic, the children, the street access, and just the appearance of what's there. You know, I'd prefer to see a nice office building, you know, with cars like we used to have out there, rather than these semis pulling through there and creating some issues, you know, for the people that are there and the children. I don't know where y'all live, but if you were sitting across the street in your own home, and, you know, this was, you were facing it, so just, you know, whatever your heart tells you.
Appreciate you coming, we'll get the answer to it. Can you answer his question on those use questions, or do we need the applicant to come back?
Yeah, there are roofing supply companies, so...
Roofing supply.
So most of that outdoor storage will be for the shingles.
So it's not under roof? It's just, is it, will be like racks, you know, sitting on racks?
Correct. They have an existing facility on Parkway Lane with similar outdoor storage, and we haven't had any issues with their outdoor storage. It's screened from view with fencing and with fabric screen on the fence, so they've done a good job with that. So this is pretty much that. There'll be some inside stuff, but a lot of it will be outside. But it's all, all the storage is back behind the face of the building. It cannot come closer to the street than the face of the...
There is some green space between the parking lot and Edgewann curb there, is that going to be maintained, or...
That's going to be increased.
It's going to be increased.
Yeah. They're going to take out some paved, some of the paved portion of that parking lot and then add landscaping to it.
I'm trying, which, okay, Lacon is on the right, or right there.
Yeah, Edgewann's at the bottom of the screen there.
So your house is across the street from where you see all those plantings?
Across on the corner, yeah.
From all those plantings?
Right.
Yep. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I think so. That one dock there, though, that's an issue, I'd seriously look at that. I'm sorry?
Said there is an entrance off Lacon, appears up on the north end of the property.
There is. I don't know how much extra space they'd have to put a, you know, a truck turnaround. If they're taking both buildings, they should be able to find space back there and kind of get the traffic off of the, you know, that residential street there. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for or against the case? Please, come up.
I'm Mary Corvo, and I live on Edler Street, which is right off of Edgewann, which I'm not really going to be like across the street from it. I do concur with what Mr. Wells has said. I don't think it's really going to be, really end up a pretty picture. There's, like you said, there's a narrow street, there's going to be an enormous amount of more traffic. And with the trucks coming in and out, and I forget what he, I don't remember what he quoted on that, that there was X number that would be in and out, and it's just going to be too much traffic to have to deal with. It's close to the school, and we have buses, which if you're down there anytime, like at 3:00 or 3:30 when school's out, we've got the lineup of buses, we've got parents, and the street is narrow, and then you've got the buses turning in with the trucks, and I'm just totally against it coming in. You know, I'd rather see offices. It is a residential, you know, I mean, that site is zone commercial and probably industrial, maybe, like that, I know that site, but... So I just wanted to just address my opinion on that.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else, please, tonight? Oh, and Ms. Hale?
I just had a question for staff. With the landscape buffering, is there any mounting, or is it just the trees?
No, there is mounting that's indicated on the plans, so that would also increase the height of the buffer.
Okay. Thank you, I missed it.
Any questions from anybody else? All right. Hearing none, I would look for a motion for this case. Any takers? Sure.
I'd like to propose a motion for case two, PZ-23-14, for 3637 LAC Property LLC at 3637 Lacon Road, for the review and approval of a conditional use under the provisions of Hilliard Code Section 1123.03, 1123.04 for building material and lumber supply, and 1123.17C for outdoor storage exceeding 10% of the total area of the site on 4.8 acre, with the following conditions. One, that the western curb cut on Edgewann Avenue is removed, and that improvements are provided according to the revised site plan. Two, that no outdoor storage is permitted higher than the height of fencing, and no storage of loose materials, such as sand or gravel or hazardous materials, are permitted to be stored as required by Section 1123.17C. Three, that a revised lighting plan, including photometrics and details, and a tree preservation replacement plan that complies with code are submitted as part of the civil plan review. Four, that final detailed specifications for the color and thickness or durability of the proposed fence screening is provided, subject to staff approval. And five, that the southern curb cut on Lacon Road be repaired with concrete, subject to approval by the city engineer.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you. Roll, please.
Chairman Muthar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schnack? Mr. Guttnick? Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you. Moving on to case number three, PZ-23-15, Hilliard Recreation and Wellness Campus Athletic Fields, located at 6287 Cos Gray Road, for review and approval of a conditional use under the provisions of Hilliard Code Section 1123.03 and 1123.04, and the Hilliard Recreation Wellness Center PUD Development Text for Athletic Fields on 79.0 acres, and temporary signage under provisions of the Hilliard Code Section 1129.08. John?
Yep, thank you. So you're, probably some of you are familiar with this site, that had a PUD concept plan approved on it, 2010. That plan did not get adopted, and in fact, the plan expired, but the PUD zoning remained in place. So early this year, a new PUD concept plan for the Recreation and Wellness Center was adopted. And in that plan and text requires conditional use approval for athletic fields. That's consistent with the Big Darby manual for that use. All right, where are I... So this is the concept plan, they got approved. So in the southern portion, SubArea 2, that's what we're talking about tonight, so those soccer fields are shown there, and then there's a multi-use path system that goes around most of SubArea 2, we can talk about that. This is the layout, see, a lot of those soccer fields, most of them are going to be grass fields. You can see on the very far right, there's two synthetic surface fields there. Those are the ones that will have the lighting, maximum height of those lights is going to be 80 feet, and they will, it's just, those are the only fields that'll be lighted. You can see along the southern portion of the site, there's, the path runs along there, there's some additional landscaping. This is the more accurate in terms of landscaping, where the turf fields are, there's no proposed landscaping at this point. There's no fencing along there, but there is an existing fence row between this property, or along this common property line, between this site and the Heritage Golf Club site. Now, this is just part of their landscape plan. You can see the parking lot landscaping, the perimeter and interior landscaping meets the requirements of the code. There is, in the south side of the parking lot, there's a, there's a building that has restrooms and an optional, has some storage areas, but has optional concession stand in it, and so you'll see those on the plans, but that is not required to have a conditional use, that's an accessory structure to the permitted uses, so it's, it doesn't require conditional use approval. Is there more detailed plans for the landscaping around each of the fields? This is that building, so you can see architecturally, they took some design cues from the rec center, in that it has some areas where there'll be some shade in the potential area on this one, you can see the difference. This one is without, whoops, this is without the concession stand, this is with the concession. You see those additional windows in the upper right building elevation. The lighting plan shows parking lot lighting, it meets the text requirements, they're maximum 25 feet in height. There's lighting along the access road, coming from the two entry points on the Cos Gray Road extension. And then there are the six field light poles, you can see there, that type of fixture. This just shows the approximate location of those lighted fields, and you see the golf course on the south side of those. Between that and the closest property line of the house, of the residential properties in Heritage Lakes, is about 300 feet from that southern property boundary. The light pole's going to be another 135 feet north of that, so you're going over 435 feet from the back rear property line of these properties to the light pole, which is here. So that should work out well. You got an email that we included that expressed concerns about a potential path connection approximately here, from the adjacent property to the south, with the concern that if there are cars parked on this road, where there has the boulevard, it makes it difficult to get around, and usually people have to go on the other side of the boulevard, if that happens for various reasons. If there is, let me go back to that, if there's concern about that, we don't have, we don't have a path easement through the golf course property to get to there, so if that, if that doesn't happen, not too worried about it, because on the Alton Darby roadside, there will be a path connection to the sidewalk. You can see as the sidewalk gets out to Alton Darby Road here, from the subdivision, there will be connection along Alton Darby Road there on the west side of that property. There's a, there's an existing connection, you know, through the golf course there that gets up to municipal park, and that will remain. So if this, if this doesn't happen, the staff's recommendations are typically to have more connections, but if there's a problem with, that might be created with this, we can work with them on that, and that's, it is not a done deal to put that in there. We do have the caution that just because there's no path connection doesn't mean people are going to try to park there, the proximity, but that can be handled with, you know, police enforcement and that kind of thing. So that, there may be other concerns from the, from the neighbors, but we did, we wanted to make sure you had that, when that came from the homeowners association.
Yep.
So this is just looking further east along that same road, where the, you can see where the golf course, there's some mounting on the golf course and some significant existing landscaping that will, will buffer that as well. But just a couple of details in the staff report. So there is, when this application went through the Darby Accord Panel, there's some certain recommendations that they made, and some of those were adopted as conditions of approval. One of the items in the text concerning open space and natural open space. There's distinction there. The PUD text states that 50% of the site will be open space, not less than 22% of the site will be natural open space. And the Darby Accord Panel encouraged us to, to end up with natural open space that would be consistent with the tiered lands that were showed in the original documents in the Darby Accord Watershed Master Plan. And so we're going to be close to that. That was approximately 42% of the overall site being natural open space. So when you look at the stream restoration area, the natural areas that will be around the soccer park and around the rec center on the other side of the street, it'll be very close to that. So with natural open space. So those are things like, so the mowed grasses don't count towards that. But the non-mowed portions, the prairie-type plantings or woodlands, and the stream restoration area all count towards that. Wetlands count towards that as well. So we're meeting the intent of that. This site should remind you, it's not included in the area of the Darby Accord plan that requires 50% open space. But we were trying to do that to be consistent with some other developments out there, like Heritage Preserve and that kind of thing. The Darby Accord Manual does recognize that athletic fields and playgrounds will be needed as the area in the western part of here develops. And so it's included as a conditional use, so it's also included in the PUD that way. And that's why you're looking at it. This will go on to city council for their approval. I mentioned the lighting, so the light poles that are proposed are consistent with the requirements in the zoning text. We talked about open space, so on this SubArea 2 site, approximately just a little over 27 acres of natural open space will be provided. And so what we will do is keep track of that as the other portions of the PUD develop to ensure that we get at least 50% open space and close to that 42% natural open space. Mentioned the multi-use path, let me go back to that. It's here, so in the upper-left portion of this, where there's a roundabout entrance. So we have this entrance drive, there's another roundabout just up here. This is the path, multi-use path around that site. And that's a 12-foot wide path. That will be no closer than 30 feet to the Stream Quarter Protection Zone. And that was one of the recommendations from the Darby Accord Panel. And so that path has been pulled westward a little bit to get out of there. There is also paths along the south side of this drive, south and east sides of that, that will connect to the regional path here, and then the additional paths that, that enter into the site this way. This, the public street, the Cos Gray Road extension will also have multi-use paths along the side of that. So they will all be connected to each other. But the 12-foot path is one that'll be the regional one that will extend over to Heritage Preserve and then extends east into Municipal Park. So that we hope will be extended further westward with development. Staff finds that the proposed conditional use is consistent with the provisions of the Hilliard Code Sections concerning conditional uses and the Hilliard Recreation and Wellness Center PUD Development Text. Staff finds that the proposal will be consistent, or is consistent with the land use and development policies of the Big Darby Accord Watershed Master Plan. Based on these findings, staff recommends that the commission forwards a positive recommendation to council concerning the proposal with the three conditions listed. Do you have questions about any of those?
John, I've got a couple. I didn't read the lighting plan, but are you proposing any solar panel, solar-powered lights at all at the site?
I'm not aware that there's any solar power at this point as recommended.
Two more questions.
But, Ed Merritt, Director of Parks and Recreation is, is here. He can tell you a little more about that.
I've got two other questions, if you want to. Unless you want to speak now, Ed? Okay. The Loop Road there, could you help me with the name of that?
The Loop Ro-
At the bottom of the picture?
Yeah.
Here did you take Stripe?
Okay. Kind of address this in a reverse way. If no one from the subdivision really needs that connection, and if the city doesn't need it from the parks side, I don't see a reason for a connection anyway, because it's not a necessity for the, either longevity of the park or the community's requesting a connection, because they can easily go down Alton Darby. So I agree with not having, not providing a connection.
That's fine. We haven't, we haven't gotten any easements or anything from the the golf course. And if, and if they'd rather not have it, we're fine, because there's two other connections.
And the eastern portion where the creek is, was there a floodplain? Do you have a map overlay? Everything's outside the-
It's, it's completely outside the floodplain, yeah. It's outside the floodplain and the Stream Quarter Protection Zone, which extends beyond that.
That's all I had, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So back to that pathway connection. Like, is someone pushing for that, or has the idea just been thrown out there?
No one's pushing for it, it's just what, hey, here's, it would be, it would be an easy connection from this neighborhood into the park. And so typically, we recommend multiple connections as much as possible. That would be a convenient location. But if, if most are opposed to it.
Okay, so it's just an idea.
We don't, we can do, it'd be fine if it isn't there. But we just thought, if, some neighborhood say, hey, we want the path connection. If that neighborhood was saying, hey, we want the path connection, we'd try to find a way to make it happen. If everybody in that neighborhood wanted it, but the golf course wouldn't give us an easement, we're not getting it. So a number, a number of things have to happen for, for that. But if it's, if it's preferred to, to not be there, we can take it off the plan and not worry about it.
Let me add one thing to that. There are, there are connections. There's a connection through the golf course down at the park, just right of where you would be on this screen. So there's a connection in the park from there.
There's one right here? And there will be one here when the, when the road is built.
And, and the potential, I live in Heritage Lakes as well, so when you do come out there, if there's two car, a car, a parked car and a car can get by. But if you got a truck and a truck, then somebody's up on the, up in the median strip or they're doing a cut around or something, so.
Yep, no, it's a, it's a good point. One that we hadn't really thought of when this was coming through. So if this would help prevent that from, from being problematic, we don't have any problem with not having the path connection.
Notes from this meeting substantial enough, or does that need to be something you want to see in a condition?
It, it doesn't have to be in a condition. I think, I think the discussion's good enough. We, we hear what you're saying.
Okay, well, we'll see what residents have to say.
So.
There is, depends on what drawing you look at.
Yeah.
Some drawings show one, some don't.
It's, uh, let's get to the-
There's an existing fence.
Hang on.
But where they're showing it coming through, it's broke right there, because of- transmission lines are broke.
No, for the transmission lines.
Where is it? Oh, here we go. So yeah, when you, there, down here, you see that connection. The overall site plan shows it, but it's tough to see. Hang on a second. It's tough to see with the color rendering. Where's that one? Ah, it's not there. There's a, there's another colored rendering. We didn't put it on because it's tougher to see. This is easier to see, the fields and the path. But that one, you can, and it's, and it's partly obscured by some of, some of the line work on the drawing. But it, it was on there. So we were, what we wanted to make sure is that if that was a desirable element, we would help it to have it. But based on what we're hearing, that is not an issue. We can take it off.
I'll, I'll just say for the record, it's desirable to me, but I'm not going to push it if you want. I also have a question on the temporary signage. What, what is the temporary signage? That's like listed in the packet as-
Yeah, it says we're approving that.
It's part of the request.
Oh. Where was that one?
The description, very last thing.
Oh, that, well, that was initially going to be, it's not in, I don't think we submitted any, right? I don't think there's anything in the packet. There was initially thought that there might be some in there. That did not make it, so that was put, that was initially applied for, ends up not being part of this application.
So we can take that out of the-
You can take it out, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak for oil? Yes, please. I apologize.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As far as solar options down at the athletic end of the, of the project, currently, we do not show any. We do have an allowance for solar with the community center, but we haven't flushed some of those details out in the design of that facility yet.
If you feel it's something that's inviting for the community these days, the 21st century to do so, I'd recommend it. I've seen other parks in the country that embrace it.
Yeah, for sure. And then, yeah. As far as the connection, the, the multi-use connection to the community or the, the neighborhood there, one of the reasons why we show that is, one, we need the utility easement for, for the project itself. And two, our last statistically valid survey that we've done, basically any survey that we do, typically the top choices, and in this last one, the top three choices were different types of, of connections of paths. So it's one of those things that anytime that we have the ability to connect a neighborhood into a regional path, we, we try to do that.
But you have no objections to us not implementing that?
I think it should be there, but yeah, I mean, if you guys make the decision not to put it in there, I mean, that, that, you know, my preference would be that we'd have as many connections as possible.
Anything else? Any questions? Name up here.
Are we making a decision on the path?
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned.
Well, I think we're, yeah. Please.
My name's Tim Van Echo. I'm one of the houses in Heritage Lakes that's about as close to this development as possible. My question is on the lighting. Is there a timeframe when that lighting will be off? Or what do you, do you know what the structure of that would be?
Yeah, they, they cannot be on past 10 o'clock.
Okay. I'm usually awake till 10, so that's good. Number two on the connectivity, we're just talking about a pathway, not a roadway. Is that connect, correct? So-
Correct, it would be a bicycle path.
Yeah. Myself, being close to this development, I would be, I would like to see a path there, to be able to ride the bike and walk through there. Maybe some no parking signs, but I would, I would be a favor, in favor of a path there. The last thing is, it's going to be operated by the City of Hilliard, is that correct?
The, the field, you mean?
The field and whole development.
Yes, it would be our, we under our control, yeah.
And any idea on fee structure to be a member there? Or how does, do you know, any idea how, does any of that work yet?
Not at this point.
Okay. But it will have membership to, to join and be able to use the field.
Absolutely, there'll be a fee structure that will, you know, for residents, that hasn't been determined. But, uh, uh, most times, it's, Hilliard residents have a lower fee than non-residents typically. We, we anticipate something similar.
And maybe even lower fees for Heritage Lakes, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
The lowest fees for Heritage Lakes, is that what you recommend? Okay. We'll, we'll talk, we'll talk to council about that for you.
Please, anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Bill Maul. I too am a member of the homeowners association with Heritage Lakes. And talking with Islam, who is the president of our Heritage Lakes Association. I think the desire here is, or is to not have parking there. And the feeling is that if there is a path that close to it, that, as we all know, people take the path of least resistance. People might park along that, and it's very difficult to get through that area when cars are parked along that boulevard. You know, I think we would like a path someplace that would connect to that path, but not the one that's just the closest there to that. You know, if there's another way to connect from the existing path that cuts through the golf course over, all for that. But if there is an existing path, then there needs to be something that helps us control parking there so that, that people won't park there and cut across real quick to their kid's soccer game. And then the, the second thing, question I have is, the landscaping that goes along this, is it on a berm of some type or a mound? Is it, is it very thick? I mean, is it possible for people to, or will it be, you know, they'll have to dig their way through tree branches to get through it, that type?
There is some, we're still, we're still getting the final plans of this, so and a lot of it depends on how much dirt you have to get rid of and that kind of stuff. But the idea, the preference would be to, yeah, have some mounding to give it a little relief and not just have it flat. But the, the plantings that you see along there look like they're pretty thick and like, hey, we're not going to be able to move through that. But these are shown typically at maturity. And so they'll be, it'll be easy to walk through the, the trees that get planted on this site. The tougher one's going to be on that tree road that exists. You know, so if you, if you get a break in that, you'll be able to get into the, to the park.
Okay. Yeah, that's our concern, is it's not easy to, to walk, walk through there.
Right, it will not, it will not be difficult to, to get through the trees that are planted on the soccer site.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Please.
Dan Rowley with the City of Hilliard. I just wanted to follow up on the trail connectivity discussion. As you probably know, there's not currently any pedestrian connection along Alton Darby Road from the subdivision to the south. And there aren't plans as part of this project to install that. I know as a father with kids, having access in places that aren't along busy arterials is preferable when I'm out on my bike with them. And this connection is one that, when we've had discussions with the golf course, because we need the water and sewer connections to come in through that location, is something that we've seen as beneficial. The only other connection that I'm aware of is through the golf course itself into the existing municipal park. And while we will have a connection between the two halves of the park, that connection is going to be fairly far north, not really close to the soccer fields itself. So I think without this connection at kind of the belly of the, the street area, there's really going to be limited connectivity from this neighborhood into the park, or at least it's going to be more constrained. Happy to work with residents about parking. You know, this is a boulevard section of roadway. And I guess I would be a little bit amazed if people tried to park in there, but happy to work on restriction of parking in this area, if that's the primary concern, rather than seeing limited access for non-motorized connectivity within the park.
So you're suggesting, when you say work with them, you're going to put signs up to say no parking?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm happy to, to do that as we have issues, for sure. You know, the boulevard section, when I've driven through there candidly, I guess I haven't had to navigate around another car, but it does not feel wide enough for me to park a vehicle. I, I understand and appreciate that that may be something that, that needs to be addressed. But our goal is to provide convenient of parking and ample amounts as part of the overall complex, that that's not an issue. But happy to address issues within a residential area that might be impacted by this development as well.
While you're there, John, I do have a question. It sure looks like there's a connection that's going down Alton Darby on this drawing, a sidewalk there.
Not that I'm aware of.
So it goes through the corner, it just doesn't go south once you get there?
Yeah. Right.
Is there a reason we can't do that?
That first parcel's a township. It's not in the city, so we wouldn't be able to utilize city funds for the extension of sidewalk across there. We're installing it obviously as part of- We're installing it, obviously, as part of various parts of this project, but it's not something that's envisioned right now.
But it's not a right-of-way issue, it's a funding-
I don't know what the right-of-way is for that parcel that hasn't been incorporated.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I want to remind the commission that the only thing in front of you regarding this is the conditional use on allowing the athletic fields, and the discussion of trails is not part of the conditional use. And so, Mr. Schnack had asked the question about whether you're deciding anything. I want to just make very clear, there's no purview regarding whether a trail or not goes in. The only thing in front of the commission is whether this conditional use for athletic fields, it complies with the PUD.
That's very good, so that will, there will be a day that that comes back to us, then?
Um, I, I have to ask, I don't know if they're going to see another final development plan. What we can say, though, is that your, this discussion and these questions are going to be conveyed to city council and will be conveyed to the design team, but the decision of whether to put a trail and make a connection is with the city, working with the property, with the adjacent property owners and getting resident input, it's not a purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. In this, in this situation, it isn't.
One more question related to the path. I know you've got, there's a water line or a stake there, I saw the blue staking for that. So you've got an easement for the water line that you worked out with the golf course?
Yeah, we're negotiating an easement right now for both water and sewer through that area.
So will that, so will that easement also enable you to put a, put a connection there, a sidewalk connection?
Correct.
And they, and the golf course knows that?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right. Anyone else from the audience like to speak to us, please?
Hi, my name's Laura Tucker. I also live in Heritage Lakes, and I wanted to piggyback on one of the comments. I am opposed to that cut-through path because of it would encourage parking on that area, but I think it also affects a safety issue, as there is no fire truck, no ambulance, no medic, that is gonna be able to make their way through that area if there are cars parked there. So it has to be a situation where either you do not allow parking, or there's no path, because I think you're putting the residents in jeopardy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I think all of you that came tonight from Heritage Lakes, you understand that we're, even though we're discussing this path, that's not the, that's not what we're voting on tonight. Any other questions? Hearing none, then I'd look for a motion for this case. Chairman? Yes. No, just so we can make the motion, if you're ready. Yeah, please. For case number three, PZ-2315, Hilliard Recreation and Wellness Campus Athletic Fields, located at 6287 Conscret Road, for approval with conditional use under provisions of Hilliard Code Section 112303AN112304, and the Hilliard Recreation and Wellness Center PUD Development Text for Athletic Fields and 79.0 acres with the following three conditions: One, not less than 27 acres of natural open space will be provided within sub-area. Two, that the light trespassing onto any residential property or properties shall not be more than 0.3-foot candles when measured at grade 10 feet beyond property line. Three, that the site complies with provisions of Hilliard Stormwater Design Manual and the Ohio EPA Construction General Permit. Got a motion, I'll make a second.
Chairman Muthar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schnack?
Yes.
Mr. Guttnick?
Yes.
Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you all for coming this evening, appreciate it. Moving on to case number four, PZ-23-16, Dunlap Holdings LLC, property located at 4,000 Parkway Lane, for review and approval of a conditional use under the provisions of Hilliard Code Section 1123.03, 1123.04, and 1123.18F for indoor commercial recreation on 1.01 acres.
This is another conditional use request for the building at 4,000 Parkway Lane. This is specifically for indoor commercial recreation. So the site's located at the northwest corner of Parkway Lane and Lyman Drive, as shown on the screen. This gives you a, kind of an aerial perspective of the site looking to the north, north, northwest. This is a view from the corner, looking to what is the, the previous building expansion that occurred in, I believe, 2018. And then, this is a view along Parkway Lane, so you can see the, the existing parking area on the south side of the building and the entrance, which is located on the west end of the building. The existing floor plan, this is the former Sports Imports building, so the, the western portion of the building was office, and then the, the eastern portion, including the, the building addition, was warehouse space that received former conditional use. What's proposed is to modify the interior of the building, so to do a combination of general office and retail for the use, to have a small warehouse area for storage, and then to do a combination of weight training and speed training area with general sports training, which totals a little over 8,300 square feet. So this is the plan that was provided in your packet. They indicate 30 spaces. Based on our evaluation, they can potentially have 29 spaces that would meet code requirements. They provided estimated parking needs. So one of the, one of the issues or things to, to address with this application is the parking levels. As noted in the report, we feel that there's 29 available spaces on site, if it's striped properly. They provided an estimated schedule for what they expect to have in the facility, so that included a weekday schedule when the office is open. And in general, they're looking at 10 to 13 parking spots being used. They also provided a weekend schedule, which includes more intensive training. Those, again, are expected to be in the neighborhood of 10 to 11 people per session, and then some support staff that would be there as well. So again, they're estimating in the 10 to 13 parking space range. When we look at the code requirements, we provided a breakdown of what the code requires by the, the uses or components of the, the overall use within the building. The office, retail, and the warehouse storage end up requiring approximately 13 spaces. And as we said, they have the potential right now with the pavement that they have on site for 29 spaces. The, the trick of this is the, the training or the recreation portion of the building, that is required to be one per three persons based on the maximum occupancy as defined by the building code or the fire code. In this case, it's considered as an assembly use by the, the CBO, which, when you do the calculations, would allow an occupancy up to 167 people within that 8,000-square-foot space. That's not the intent for this particular use. They're looking for the ability to do specialized training, you know, small-scale training, so we're not talking a, an open assembly area like a gymnasium or something like that, which can hold a large amount of people. Based on what the code requires, though, as it's written, it's 69 spaces that would be required on site. Like I said, the site currently can accommodate 29. And so, in your report, and as part of the condition, staff recommended posting an occupancy of 20, so while the building code would allow up to 167, as part of the conditional use, we're recommending a, a lower level B posted that would be more appropriate to the, the level of parking that they actually have. The staff recommended an occupancy of 20, talking, or staff's recommending that. The applicant, though, and, and having discussion with them, they would like to see a posted occupancy of 48, so that's the one area of discussion that, that we're not totally in agreement with, that we'd like to have some feedback and direction from the commission. They previously had an approved landscape plan that, that was part of the building addition along Lyman Drive, and there's a condition in your report, we've actually done a, a follow-up landscape inspection, and all of that landscaping, except for maybe one of the street trees, is actually in, and that's something we can work with, with the applicant, so we don't necessarily need that condition in the report as well. The staff finds that the proposed conditional use is consistent with the intent of the code and will not generally impact the character of the area. This staff finds that this is a specialized facility, and given the, the limitations of the conditional use, that it can conform to the size requirements of the B4 district. And staff recommends approval with the conditions as noted on the screen, and there are some minor changes. Originally, we had specifically stated lacrosse and soccer training. They would like that to, to state general sports or athletic training, to not limit it to a particular sport necessarily. And given that, we're also comfortable not having the requirement there that the training sessions are not permitted during the office hours, so that's something we're proposing to strike. And then, as I noted, number five, based on our, our overview of the site today, there are just some minor things. We generally don't need that condition at this point.
It's condition three that you have-
Condition three is the one that the, the applicant would like to have that modified from 20 to 48. Can you say again how you came up with the 20 number?
Yeah, how's your calculation?
It was based on discussions with the applicant on how, what were the maximum number of people that'd be training in that warehouse area, plus a few coaches? And it was under 20, we rounded up to 20, because in terms of the parking requirement, that would add seven spaces to the, to the total requirement, but would, would be in keeping with the 29 that are on the site.
Any other questions, the staff? Is the applicant here? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So I'm a little confused. If they have the spaces for 29 spots, then why would we want to limit them to the amount of people that can train? Or why is the recommendation to limit it to 20 people?
Because if you allow more than that, then they don't meet the parking requirement with the spaces that are on site.
But I thought, wait, so they don't have space for 29?
So they, they have, so when you, when, the required number of spaces for the retail portion, plus the office portion, plus the training area, if you have, if you have a maximum number of people that are allowed in the training area, then they can meet the parking requirement. If the maximum number of people in that training area are what the building code says you can have in that building as a maximum, they don't meet the parking requirement. So we're saying, as, as part of the conditional use, if you limit the number of people that can be in there, then you meet the parking requirement. And the building, the building code is based on the size of the facility and how many people you can meet in there maximum, like, for example, if you're standing, or if you're seated, you know, and, and chairs and that kind of stuff. So from an assembly space, more people can fit in the building. If you're just using it for athletic training, you can't have people standing shoulder to shoulder in the entire space, so you have less. So in our initial discussions with them, was, was a smaller number of people that were anticipated to be in that area. The 48 is above what we had talked about.
By looking at the initial slide that had like the parking spaces, could you go back to that for a minute, please?
Oh, sorry. The limit of 20 is just for part of the building, not for the whole facility?
Correct, the limit is 20 for use in the training facility.
Oh, okay, that's what I was missing. Thank you, Ms. Nixon. But so the whole building, though, however, can have more than that because they have more parking-
Right, the, the parking requirement for retail and office is based on the square footage. The parking requirement for the training area as an assembly space is based on the maximum number of people that can fit in it, depending on the use. So, so you think about an auditorium that has fixed seats, you can fit less people in there than if you have seats that are movable, or, and there's even more people can fit in there if it's standing room only. So, a lot depends on the, for the building code and fire code, depends on how they're using it. In this one, if you're, if you've got lacrosse goals set up and you're doing training with, you know, 15 kids, there's not that many people you're gonna fit in there. And then, so we're thinking, based on that, with the small parking lot, then that won't, you're less likely to have cars jammed up in that lot backing out into the public street, which is our big concern. And so, the more you limit that, as a, as a conditional use, you can do that, the more, the less likely you are to have backups into the public street, cause problems there.
Will there be times when the office and retail is not open, that the training facility could use those 10 extra spots?
Have to ask the applicant that. It's, it's possible, yeah, but, but what the parking requirement is based on is, if the, all uses are being used at the same time, because that could happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess we should have the applicant come up. Any other questions for staff right now? Is the applicant here this evening? He's approaching. State your name.
Hi, my name's Anthony Kelly. Thanks for having me. A lot less pressure after everybody cleared out of here. So this is my first time doing one of these, so please, help me along, and if you have any questions, I can highlight a few of those areas. So you mentioned the office space, so the office space will generally be used during the day, during weekday hours. But as you're all aware, most people are in school, doing other things, so the, the training space will not be really foresee that being used during regular peak hours. So our anticipation from the slide that we had submitted will pretty much be running from 5 o'clock until 10 o'clock, where our normal business hours are from 8 to 3, and there's only seven full-time people that will be on that side. So really, theoretically, the parking lot will open up in entirety for the use of the training space in the evenings. You know, the other part of that with the schedule that we submitted was to have buffer time periods in there to allow transition between one space to the next, you know, being very conscious of the parking. We actually own a place called the Resolute Athletic Complex, which is out at Easton. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with that, but it's a 74,000-square-foot indoor soccer facility. So we have three indoor fields there, so we're very aware of parking and, you know, how that works. But this, this model that we're presenting, and we had spoken to John about, completely different, no leagues, no gameplay, just simply focused on small training, and that's where we didn't want to quite be limited to strictly soccer and lacrosse, we want to be able to open it up for small training for soccer, or for, or, excuse me, for, you know, baseball, or football, or whatever it may be, that athletes and, and people in the area would love to just have access to. Happy to answer any direct questions?
This one comes to mind on, you know, John's got a number here, 20, 20 persons in that one facility area, and you want 48, but you only got 29 parking spaces.
Sure, but we're basing it on, you know, if you go back to the, the slide that we had submitted, if you don't mind pulling that one up, Carson, there, yeah, that one you just had? So, yeah, it's, it's on the right side, so, you know, based on that, or I guess, the bigger one above it, you know, based on the assembly of one per three people, that's 167, which would force 69 spots. You know, we're never gonna have that many, we have no anticipation of being at that level. So in the red there, if you look, you know, we're proposing 48 to be that cap number, which would allow us to have the, meet it with the 29 parking spots that we currently have. The other thing, too, is onsite, if you saw in the picture, there's two giant loading docks that are presently there, that were being used for trucks that aren't gonna be used at all with what we're doing, so that would be additional staff parking, where we could basically put our cars, you know, staff onsite to be able to park there, that wouldn't interfere with anything that is currently being used on the property.
So no, no competition, no events, training for individual athletes, do you anticipate any bus traffic, for instance, a team would come in?
No, not in- No, not in. Not at all. No, we, we would, we would, no. Short answer is no. No team, no teams, no gameplay, no competition, no tournaments, nothing, nothing that would, you know, cause a large group to come in there at one time. You know, I think the other positive to that is with the hours that we will have, it should actually limit the, the flow of traffic, you know, being the off-peak hours, that most of our activity will be there outside of the seven full-time staff members that we have, which will be there during the day. Majority of that traffic will be in the evening, which should actually limit some of that traffic in that area that, from the previous occupant. And, you know, like I said, they had the two, I don't know exactly how many trucks they had coming and going, but I would anticipate they had some large semis that were coming and going pretty frequently in that area, and, and we're also limiting that as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
May I? So during summer hours, when kids aren't in school, are there going to be, how is that dynamic change for the use here with, because people will be in the office and the retail area and the training area?
That's a good question. You know, everybody on our staff who's a full-time employee are also the coaches. So we would be kind of flowing with different groups that are there. And we also have, we're, we have teams that are operated out of Cleveland, Cincinnati, Toledo, as well as here, and we travel with those teams during the summer. So everybody who's in the office will primarily be on the road, you know, so the normal business hours that we would have during the, let's call it, school year, won't be the same hours that we would be operating during the summer. So at that point, it would basically strictly be a, a training space.
I had a question. One of the conditions says no spectators. And I don't know if this is a staff question or a you question, but like, if you've got, like, you know, mom brings their kid, and they've got the little brother hanging there, you know?
Sure.
Are they spectators, or is that?
You know, that was something that we had spoken, when, when I've met previously with John, which was great, answered a lot of questions for us. You know, it was one of those things that we, if, if we need to put that in as a, a condition to limit spectators, if that helps meet approval to, you know, have it where...
It's in there.
You know, so if, if, if that's something that has to happen, then, then, you know, I understand it's one of those that we'd have to self-regulate at that point. If that's something that doesn't seem feasible, and we need to adjust that, again, I, I don't know how any of this goes, so I apologize if, if something that's on paper at this point. And, you know, I mean, I would imagine at some point, some people would come in there to pick up their, their child, things like that. So, you know, the other, the other thing, all the training that we will do when it comes to the lacrosse side, you know, we have our soccer facility. If it's client, if it's clients that we currently have, which will be the majority of the people that train in that space, they will be families that participate in our club. So we have access for communication, email, all that, where we lay out the rules, expectations, where, you know, we could kind of create that flow and, and build that as a, a natural thing, where you come in, drop the, drop your child off, and, you know, clear out of the lot.
I think Eric had a question.
Yeah, just more of a perspective, I guess I want to go with, I'm kind of in agreement with the 48, given a couple caveats here. One is, you know, it seems your five to 10 scenario, and, and a more commercial industrial area is not heavily operated at that time.
Sure.
That, I think that opens it up to like some street parking, which I know, we've been very generous in the downtown, say, and build it and let them work it out. To me, the 48 and let them work it out also applies here in my mind.
Except there's no street parking on?
On none?
Oh, no. Not on, not on Parkway Lane or Lyman. That'll be, that'll be problematic with through movement of traffic.
I'm always big on compromises. Do you see a compromise here? You know, you were suggesting 20, and he's at 48.
Well, I mean, that was based on our initial discussions, because in our initial discussions, it was in that, in the workout area, hey, there's only going to be, you know, a dozen kids, or we figured, okay, let's say there's 15, and there's five coaches, or there's 18 and two coaches. Forty, I mean, I don't know, I don't know the dynamic of that 48 individual cars coming to drop kids off is different. This, the code, when you talk about recreation stuff, usually has more than one per vehicle or two per vehicle. You know, you can bring a group of kids, but not if he does that. So in this type of use, I don't know how much carpooling is done when you have only, if you're only going to have 15, 20 kids. So that's why there's, with the lower number, if all 20 come, you're probably going to fit in that parking lot, if they come as, you know, one kid per car. 48, I don't know.
Majority, that's, that's a great point, John. You know, the majority of the people that are going to be coming, if they're under high school age, which will be majority of what we're training, obviously there'll be some high school athletes as well. You know, we'll be conscious of that with the numbers and the sizing when we do the grouping. But, you know, from a youth perspective, there will be a ton of carpooling. If you have kids, I'm sure you guys can all imagine, one person generally picks up the neighborhood kids, or, you know, three or four, and somebody will come and, and drive them home. And, you know, that's the majority of what we see at our current facility, and I would anticipate that to be the same, you know, at this location as well.
I mean, operationally, if it works, it works, you're not too worried about it. But what we have to worry about is the through movement of traffic on the public streets, and this has one access point. So it's just, I don't know how you demonstrate that that's going to work until you see it.
Well, one thing we've not mentioned, and my son played hockey for years, still does, this site might see overflow parking into Wendy's and Sheetz. I'm sure they would not like to have cars sitting there for hours, waiting for their kid to get out, as my son did for years. It's a tough call. I understand, you're trying to, to train the young kids, if there's an influx of bubble, then the, the bubble goes. So I would say a compromise at 25, maybe even 30. Maybe we can reevaluate this next month, I don't know. We're, we're training one facility, Sports Impact, for years, correct? Because Sports Impact was here in 2018, they're leaving and you're coming in.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. You don't happen to have what their head counts were, do you?
I don't. I know, I know the majority of the space was, you know, large warehouse space, where they were doing, if I'm not mistaken, it was volleyball posts for the, for the volleyball nets, and it was just the, the poles. That's what they produced. So they had large, they've since moved them out, but there were large racks that were throughout the entire space. And, you know, originally, when we were first talking to John and kind of game planning, and just kind of assessing what made sense for us in that space, you know, we'd only been there one time. And then after going back again, there's a large, they had a lot of equipment in there, and there's a large electric setup that's kind of generally right in the middle of that secondary building, and we weren't sure if that was going to be able to be moved. After talking to some contractors, we have the ability to redirect that, which would open up some more space, and that's basically where, you know, the, the change was on our end. And we're just trying to be as efficient as we can with the space that we have, you know, and just not limit ourselves.
So what I propose, just me speaking as a member, this is an idea that bumped the number for tonight to 25, or postponed it till next month, maybe a solid number that we all can agree upon. It seems to be the only impact right now.
Dr. Hale's got a question?
Thank you.
Or comment?
So, do you have a maximum class size? Because a class size might regulate your parking more than occupancy.
Yeah, I mean, we could, if, if that's something that needed to be, you know, set, the, the number of 48. So if, if you were to, Carson, if you don't mind, or I'm not sure who's controlling the, the page there, but if, maybe scroll back to the overhead of the, the proposed space that we have there. So if you look at it to the, the far right, there's that kind of training space going up and down, and the secondary space, that's kind of going across there. They're pretty close in size. So, you know, we anticipate to have two groups, you know, operating, either one leaving, one coming. You know, I wouldn't anticipate, I would say, less than 20 in each of those, coming and, coming and going at a time. So it'd be under, under 40 athletes at a time, you know? And then that small gap there would be for, you know, a couple of coaches.
Okay.
Carson, could you put the conditions back up? The, you've got some that are crossed out and different things right there. If we, if we change the 20 to 25 tonight, and then monitor it for a year, he could come back a year from now and go, hey, I'm only using half my parking spaces, I told you so, can you, can you give me 40 or 48 then? Is that something we could do? Like go to, change that to 25 tonight?
You could, you could make that recommendation to council, yeah. It's going to come to council, yeah.
What'd you say?
Or, or, you know, after six months, or, you know, whatever, you can, you could, you could certainly recommend that, and then we could see how it works and bring it right back. Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is a smaller facility, so you'll probably know sooner how that's working.
You've, you've read these conditions?
Yes, sir.
And how they've been edited?
Yeah.
You're okay with those, other than condition three? You'd like that to be 48, and John's got it at 20?
Yes.
Tonight, we made that 25, is that a, is that a deal breaker for you? And, and we address it in six months to see how things went?
It may be. My business partner's here as well. Do you guys object to him coming up to, to help me answer that question? Is that all right? I, I was, I was simply, I was simply going to say, so...
There's welcome to come up and...
We don't, we don't own, we don't own the property yet. Just, you know, we're, we're, we're going through that process, and, you know, we just, we, the short answer from my perspective, we're just trying to find out exactly what we're going to have before we go through and, with a full purchase on the building. So to put it as a temporary numbers is, is hard to say for us.
We'll let ladies go first, then.
Please.
Thank you, Greg.
Tell us your name, please.
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Lee. I am not officially part of Resolute. My husband is. He's coaching tonight. I said I would come help support Greg and Anthony. I've known these guys, and my husband has been part of this business for 15 years? Yeah. So my concern about the 48, or, I'm sorry, the 20 parking spots, is really carpooling. That, to me, is the issue. When you look at the size, and if you could go back to, please, the layout of the facility, I'm not sure he's controlling it. But if you look at both of those spaces, you can have easily two groups of 15 to 20 kids being able to run drills in both of those spaces. And to limit it to 20 kids, to me, is limiting their ability to use this space. On top of that, and I understand the parking, I really do. You know, I have a big SUV, and the reason why I got it was to be able to carpool kids. We never drive just one kid. I don't know anybody who does when they're in competitive sports. And so I understand that the number of parking spaces that they proposed is not going to fit my SUV. But when you look at, at it, when you look at the number of parking spaces, and you say we have 16 parking spaces, just theoretically saying the rest of them are for coaches, 16 parking spaces, and there's three kids in each one of those, or let's go with three people, so one adult, two kids, then you're already at the 48 occupancy. It's, it's going to be really, really difficult to be able to utilize this space to its full potential by limiting it to 20. My thoughts.
Back up a second. One adult with two kids? That's not, that's, you're going to need 20, you could have 24 of those to get to 48 kids.
But you were saying occupancy, which brings me to my other point.
Right. But what we, so, okay, when we first looked at this, this weight training area wasn't part of the equation when we first talked. Okay. So that, so it was only in the lacrosse training area that we see there in the, in the warehouse. And so that's why we thought, oh, this is easy, this will fit. If we were talking about this early on, I would have this same reservation. How do we, how do you demonstrate that that's going to, that's going to work? And so if you, so what we're talking about for the occupancy is the people who are going to be in the training area. Not all the parents are going in the training area, that's for the kids to go in there. So how, how does that change the dynamic? Because I tell you, if, when somebody can't, when somebody's parked in space 30, and then here comes the, the big SUV, guess what they're going to do? They're going to stop right there, they're going to back, or somebody behind them, then we have a problem. That is a problem.
So...
And, and on this block, where Wendy's and Sheetz, and, and the way to get to a left turn goes right past this facility, because it's problematic at the, at the other intersection. That's what we have to be worried about. If, if people don't carpool to the maximum, like you're saying, then what happens? From a procedural standpoint?
So, my name's Greg Weiss, I'm business partner Anthony Kelly, and Sarah Lee's husband, Matt. I guess, number one, I think if you're Wendy's and you're Sheetz, and we have people starting in a parking lot, I figure you'd love us, I would think. I mean, we're bringing high school boys, middle school boys to come over and, and eat, but that's, that's a secondary point.
If you can get a shared parking arrangement with them, then we're done talking.
Okay, okay. That's something that we'll pursue, for sure. I guess, so, so for me, you know, that 29 spaces that we, I think we, does everyone agree that there will be 29 spaces in this parking, parking lot? I'm, I'm asking, so, the number 48, we got to based on 29 total parking spots. So what I'm asking is, is when we look at that, obviously, the way that the current layout is, but adding, if you take away spot 30 there, we get to, we can get to 29 parking spots, correct?
That's what it shows, yeah.
Right, okay. So based on the code, if, if we take the office, the retail, and warehouse square footage, that gets us to 12, 12 spots, right? 13 spots that are, that are out, which leaves an additional 16 spots that are open. So based on the code, if we are zoned as assembly, which I think that's non-negotiable, correct, for, for the, for the city, for the CBO?
I don't know. We, we don't make that decision.
I think that was, I think he indicated that, that we'd be zoned as assembly, which is where we're getting that three to one ratio, correct? So if we, we're saying we have 16 spots that are available under this training and recreation assembly, which would then give us the 48 number. So why would we want to artificially cap ourselves on a number that is per code meets the one to three requirement?
I don't agree. That's, that's not what that says. What, what, the 48 is not what the maximum occupancy is, is it? I thought it was more than that.
The maximum occupancy as an assembly would be 167, right?
That's, that's the number.
Right. And then we would need 55 spots. But we're saying we only have 16 spots, so we're going to cap at 48.
You're, you're doing it in reverse. The way you do it is, here's what's the maximum, and that's how many parking spaces. You don't say, here's how many parking spaces, so we can cram that many people into the building. That's, that's not how it works, but you, you'd still need a variance for that.
Right. And that's, that's what we're asking for, correct?
Well, with the, with the Board of Zoning Appeals, yes.
Yes, okay. So, but that's how we arrived at the 48 number, was based on the fact, I understand, I understand...
Well, I'm aware, I'm aware how you arrived at 48, but when we talked, it was, how many people are going to be in this? And it was a way different number, and things have changed since we initially talked.
Yeah.
Right?
We, we don't anticipate 48. We, you know, are, what we're aiming for, you know, we should have 20, like, 20 should be on the high side for us, for training. But at the same time, we're trying to run a business and stay open and keep the lights on. And if we're in a scenario where we have a group that's, you know, of 30, where we're going to have 15 kids in one section and 15 in another, we don't want to say, oh, oh, hang on, guys, we can't take these five kids, even if the, the parking works out, because, because of, of a number that, that we, that's where just, we want, we want cushion, is what, what we're looking for.
So what we've, so what we're asking is, what's the maximum number you'd have in each plate?
If we can get to 40, like 40 total, so 20 and 20, we can't do more than 20 and 20 in each group, and we wouldn't do that. It wouldn't be conducive for our training.
Right. So that's what, so that's what we talked about early on.
Right.
The maximum...
So, yes, and we, and that was only one section, we said 20.
Right.
So we're doubling the sections and asking...
It wasn't even 20, it was 20 with, it was actually less, but, but we figured, all right, we'll put some in there, just for the reason you're talking about. So if we have that number, then it's going to be easier for the commission and for council to look at, hey, hey, 48, get 48, because then that less is half the money. What's the, what's the logical number that you're going to have in the building? And then, then we can... And then, then we can figure out...
Absolute, absolute max from a training perspective would be 40. 40 total.
Okay, so that would, that's helpful to figure out.
That's just a train, a train.
We're talking about the athletic part.
That's correct, yeah.
So, I mean, that helps, yeah.
Does that include coaches?
Yeah, that would include coaches as well, yeah.
Yeah, everybody in the training, so players and coaches who'd be in the training area, so...
Our, our coaches take up more space than our coaches.
So what, so the way we're figuring it is, if we know what that maximum is, and then you apply the one space per three of that maximum, can we meet it with those shown? That's the, that's the formula. So, all right.
Hey, I got a new proposal. What if we take the 20 and put it up to 30?
Is there a reason we can't go to 40?
Because of his concerns. His concerns are, we're gonna have more vehicles here than we know what to handle.
Well, here, and, so here's the thing. The thing's gonna be that this, this body's gonna make a recommendation to city council.
Okay.
Who's gonna review this, either approve it or whatever they can do. So what are, what are you, after hearing all that, what's, what are we comfortable with the number? And I think that's what you're looking at.
I think this group is comfortable with 30.
So, and you mentioned before that after a certain time period, we can see how it goes, and then if there are no problems, we come back and...
I'm all for that. If, if, if we, if we set it at 30 now, and they run with that after they've opened up, and after six months, we don't have any, you know, there's more parking spaces than we know what to do with, then let's bump it up after that. It's a compromise.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'm doing something I'm not allowed to do.
Kelly, Mr. Chairman, sorry. I just want you to be aware that you, if you make a recommendation for 30, and you put in that recommendation that also that you wanna come see it back at six months or a year to see how it's going, council could change it to 40 or a different number. And, well, I guess my question is, is do you wanna still see it? Or do you only wanna see it if it's at 30, if they wanna go up? Or if city council changes it, are you...
If city council changes it, we're fine.
Because they, just city council has the final approval. So I just want, again, you have to work through that process on exactly what is, what is being done tonight and what is the final step. So I just wanna make that clear, that if that happens, what is your expectation of seeing this again if council decides to increase it? I just want you to be aware of that.
That even, okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, so if you, if you make that recommendation, and council's gonna approve something more than that, then they would need to come back to you, is kinda what you're saying. That could be part of your motion.
We don't want it to come back to us if council, if it also goes over us and says, "Hey, give them 40." We don't care to see it.
Right, that could be part of your recommendation, too. The, the balancing act for them is, they're trying to figure out, the future part is problematic for them, because they have to decide whether they're gonna purchase with that unknown. But if, but see, the good part of that is, if you, if you can, if it, if operationally there are no problems with that, it's easy to do that, but you have, you have to make a decision on...
That's what I was gonna ask. Based off of the conversation we just had, and kinda backing, not backing into the numbers, but going through the process that you wanted to, does that get you to the 40? Are you comfortable with the 40? Is the maximum occupancy in those two areas?
If you have, what's, give me the, 40 would be 14, yeah. We had some, we had some...
Chairman Muthar. May I ask the owners a question? Thank you. Did you say your class times are staggered, so only half of that number will be coming at a time? So not everybody's coming at the same exact...
Yeah, we can, we can do, we can stagger the fields. We can, we'll make sure that parking is not an issue.
Yes.
We will make sure that parking is not an issue, and, you know, that's, I guess for me, if we can get to 40, that really helps us, just if we have, if we happen to have that. We think we can make it work. We don't think parking's gonna be an issue. And I would, I would ask for, if you guys are gonna say, "Hey, it has to be 30," I would say, "Come out in a month so that we can get that number up," because I really don't think that parking's gonna be an issue. We talked about carpooling. I mean, I took my kids to practice the other day. I had four kids in the back, you know, and, and we're dropping them off, and then we're coming and picking them up. So, I don't know. I don't, I don't think that parking, I, I know it's a concern for you guys. I don't think it's a major concern for us, based on the model, that we're, the training model that we're, we're gonna put forward in that building.
Thank you for answering my question. Thank you.
I think I answered the answer.
So with, with 40, the number would meet, when you add office, retail, warehouse is, what, 13 spaces? Plus 14 with, with the 40 max, number of people in the training area, is, what, 27? So from a code standpoint, for parking, that would meet. And then our only concern is on the changeover time, right? So when we talked about the staggering, if you've got two sessions coming, one hasn't left yet and one's coming in, so if you stagger that appropriately, then it should take care of a lot of that issue, and I think they're willing to do that. So from a, from a, just a, from a total number standpoint, if you have the carpooling and you have, I mean, this is gonna be, if there's a problem with people getting in and out of there, and that's gonna hurt them. So they have a vested interest, right, in not making that be a problem. So staggering it and ensuring that, or encouraging people to carpool, or when you drop off, like most of their, most of their experience in their other facility is, drop, drop the player off, go somewhere, somewhere else, come back and pick them up. If that happens here, it should be fine. And with the, with the 40 number, the reason we are on the 20 is because that was our original discussion. They didn't have that middle part usable at that point. So with the same calculation, that would meet the parking requirement.
The 40.
The same strategy of, of calculation, the 40 would meet the parking requirement. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think by looking at her by here, I think...
I was there 15 minutes ago, so...
Ms. Nixon, you had mentioned about having, having something in there about spectators. I know. It's in the conditions right now. I understand why these guys are okay with that. I will tell you, as a mom, I would love for that to be softened, because I know these guys, and they are not going to want to break any rules, right? And as a parent, I'm gonna be able to want in and be able to walk in and be able to see, you know, my kid in there, and getting their condition, or getting their practice or their skills or something else. And I think the goal of the limitation was to make sure that there wasn't going to be competition there. You know, that there's not going to be any games, or yes, a big tournament or anything like that. The field space wouldn't even allow for that, number one. But number two, I don't think it needs to be completely stricken, but if there's any way to soften it, it would allow for these guys to feel okay with having parents come in to be able to see their child before they pick them up or when they drop them off, without these guys feeling like, no, you just have to drop them off.
As long as we're under the 40 number.
Right. Sounds like some, some of the moms come in for training. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Yes, you are.
Mom's not allowed, mom's not allowed.
Sounds like some of the moms are coming in for training. Yes, yeah, I thought that's what you said.
Okay, let's put the conditions back up, Carson, if you would.
Well, I guess if, if we can agree on the 40 number, then can we just strike the spectator and as long as we're under the 40?
Matches or events?
Right, if it's the total number, it's the total number, yeah.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you all. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would speak for...
We got a couple more people, I don't know.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. I think we're ready for this. I'll tell you what, I'll make the motion and try to, try to get this down. I'd like to make a motion for case number four, PZ dash 23 dash 16, Dunlop Holdings LLC property located at 4,000 Parkway Lane, for approval of a conditional use under the provisions of Hilliard Code, Section 1123.03, 1123.04, and 1123.18F for indoor commercial recreation on 1.01 acres with the following five conditions: that a parking variance is obtained from the Board of Zoning Appeals concerning the proposed conditional use; that the indoor commercial recreation area is limited to general sports and athletic training; and that no matches or events are permitted; three, that the 8,319-square-foot indoor commercial recreation space, including weight, speed training, and lacrosse slash soccer training, is limited to a maximum of 40 persons; four, that the existing dumpster pad on the south side of the building is screened per code, and that the required fence permit is obtained prior to installation; and five, that should the proposed use create traffic congestion, congestion issues within the public right-of-way, the conditional use approval may be reconsidered by city council.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let's have a vote.
Chairman Muthar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schneck?
Yes.
Mr. Guttnick?
Yes.
Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Motion carries. Bye-bye.
Thanks for working with us. Okay, moving on to case number five, PZ dash 23 dash 17, Daylight Donuts located at 5228 Cemetery Road, for review and approval of a revised light, of a revised lighting to permit decorative outdoor light strings and revised landscape plan to permit the removal of existing trees on 5.68 acres.
Thank you. So you may remember this site when it came through PUD. Initially, the PUD did not include some, the patio areas that you see here, kinda at the corners of the building. So the southwest corner of this building and the southeast corner here. And we'll see that, so this was that original landscape plan. So you can see along Franklin Street, there's some along the front of this building, but there are none that wrap the corner on either side. That's just a close-up of that. So when, you can see, when the trees initially were installed, little things here, 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 and here, no problem seeing the storefronts or the signs or any of that. You may remember Daylight Donuts came in, got a sign variance to have a, an additional mounted sign here. That PUD allowed, by right, signs facing Cemetery Road and a second sign facing the parking lot. So to have one on a corner like that, our code normally would allow that, but the PUD text did not. And so because there was a difference in how the tenant spaces were laid out, we had to come back for some signage variances after the fact that weren't anticipated. And so some of you probably remember those. This is what this looks like now, and there's problems with blocking the signs, having them readable and easily identifiable tenant spaces, to the point where the applicant put some string lights around the sign just to make them more obvious. We talked to the applicant about, hey, if the trees could be removed from here and relocated elsewhere on site, like say, up in the grassy area where we don't have trees, would you take the lighting, lights from around the sign? Because our code doesn't allow string lights around signage. It would be fine, so we think it would be fine to have it on, either even the railing at the patio or above posts over top the patio for outdoor seating, we think would be fine. Similar to across the street where Yabo's Tacos, they do have, it's tough to see here, but if you've been out there, they do have some string lights, poles over the outdoor dining area. They do not have them up around the signage areas. So again, you can see, they did not have the same issue at the corner. We'll get another one. Now, as we move farther down, these trees were added later. The, the trees on the way western edge of this were, were shown on the original landscape plan. So as they've grown up, matured, and gotten bigger, now they're, we're seeing some impacts. And what we're saying is, let us work with the applicant on removing some of those and replanting on the site. And we can work with our forester and figure out the best places for that. We do have some trees that are gonna have to be planted in public areas that did not fit on sites on the tree replacement, some of the sites that you've seen, and we can, we can work with them that way. But I think on this, in this case, it's becoming problematic. When you go back and look at, they got a lot of nice shrubs and greenery along there. If the trees go away, they still got nice landscaping along there. Maybe put in some smaller ones or something that's more upright. We can work with them on that, but I, but it clearly is an unanticipated challenge for the visibility of the signs. And so, "Staff finds that the proposed string lights are appropriate for patio lighting but are not permitted as part of signage as defined by code. Staff finds that proposal to remove several trees is necessary so that existing signs are readable and can provide reasonable business identification consistent with the purpose of the sign code. Based on these findings, we're recommending approval of their proposed plan with the three conditions." Do you have questions about any of those?
I, not necessarily. Go ahead. Okay, John, I've got a couple, and I might come back. First of all, what's the species of those Bradford pears?
A species, you know what, I, you know what, I didn't, I didn't check to see what the species of...
What shape of a Bradford pear?
They might be, 'cause back, back before, they were prohibited.
Second of all, are those city trees?
They're not. They're, they're on the private property.
And third, you have the caliper of the combined tree tree.
I don't know what they are at this point. We have the landscape plan, the original landscape plan, and the installation size is probably two or, two inches or so, or one and a half, depending on what that showed.
The concern is, and I'm not addressing it to you, I'm addressing the whole room, is if we start cutting down trees for applicants for signage, it's kinda self-serving. It's not that they did this to themselves, but we could have Sheetz come in in a couple of years, and they want ten trees cut down so you can see Sheetz, and then Wendy's would come in, and then Rusty Restaurant could come in saying, "You know, those trees were pretty when they were year one, two, three, but now year 15, so let's buzz them all down so you can see they're pretty fine." My concern is that when you stand across the street, you look at, the trees frame that interest on Franklin really well. And I think it, to me, it's a touch self-serving. They would cut these down for Daylight Donuts. No pun intended, to provide more daylight so people can see. Sorry. But that's just a concern I have, but the way you addressed it, and if we could perhaps work something that, that caliber can be matched, these similar trees can be placed elsewhere that might be needed. Then again, the people across from Franklin and maybe a couple, you know, units over might ask for all the trees to be buzzed down, so we're back where we started.
Well, the other part is, we still, you still, even if you approve it, the proprietor has to be okay with it. And so we'd have, we're gonna have to go back and work with them on, number one, what they want, and then in the parameters of what the commission feels.
You understand that, right?
I do, but we have very few circumstances like this one where the building is right up to the right-of-way with the patio area. Frankly, if, if Sheetz wanted to pull their building up to the sidewalk, like we've encouraged them earlier, and then it was a problem. But see, when you do that, you normally don't put trees in front of it. When the, when the building is right up to the sidewalk, like in Old Hilliard, you have a street tree, but you don't have a patio tree. And this is, I don't, I can't think of anywhere else that has this situation.
Regardless of what we do tonight...
Which is why we're comfortable recommending that.
Regardless of what we do tonight, is there a possibility that if this scenario comes up again, landmark laws or someone else, that low-growth, slow-growth trees could be implanted there so this scenario does not come up, or we have to go and take 20 or 30 trees out?
Well, there are cer, I mean, there's certain types of trees that are really narrow, that don't branch out like that. I mean, if you look at, here's another one.
Yeah, that's the framing I was talking about. It is pretty, but...
Some, some of these trees end up, start getting, well, into the building. And they can cause problems that way, but it's one of those things where when you, the installation size, you think, "Ah, that's never gonna do that, 'cause they're just little twigs," but eventually that happens. This is one where I think their intention was to provide more... green, landscaping along there, and I mean, to their credit, it, it looks nice, but it doesn't allow for readable signs consistent with the sign code.
Ten years from now, those trees would eventually grow into each other, you can't see the sign at all.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I see. Thank you, that's all.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, is the applicant here this evening? Nope, okay.
Applicant's not here, we, I mean, the applicant, there, there are several applicants, but we, we're, we're working with, the Daylight Donuts initiated this, but we worked with the owner of the property on this, and gave them the go-ahead, and was supportive of coming up with a solution. So that's, if you, if you would like to see the plan come back to you before anything happens, we can do that, but we, we think that we can do that and still have it look good.
I can't speak for the other members, but I can't see us micromanaging every tree or bush or shrub that gets planted. I'm looking at the overall umbrella, if all of a sudden, 15 beautiful decorative trees are cut down, and people are scratching their heads, saying, where's this city beautiful tree city at, you know, we're taking new, newbies down.
That's when we say, that's when we say Chris Louie told us to do that.
So initially, I was not pleased with the recommendation on three, in your explanation, and possibly getting the calipers figured out. Perhaps it's worth palatable for me to be supportive of.
Yeah, we can do that, we can, we can ensure that we replace the caliper.
What if the owner says no, 'cause you said this comes from Daylight Donuts?
If the, if the property owner says, no, you're not cutting anything down, we're not cutting anything down. This, this is to give them the opportunity, if they can work that out, because the commission approved that final development plan, so you can authorize, you can authorize the change in it, but ultimately, the proprietor has to say, yeah.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion for case number five. PZ dash two-three dash one-seven, Daylight Donuts, located at 5228 Cemetery Road, for approval of a revised lighting plan to permit decorative outdoor string lights, and a revised landscape plan to permit the removal of existing trees on 5.68 acres, with the following three conditions. That, one, that clear string lights are permitted as accent lighting for the patio areas only. Two, that all clear string lights are removed from the side of the buildings and signage to comply with the code enforcement notice. And three, that a revised landscape plan identifying trees to be removed for signage, visibility, is submitted along with proposed replacement trees, subject to staff approval. I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Mu, or Chairman Muthar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schneck?
Yes.
Mr. Guttnick?
Yes.
Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Motion carries, five oh.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us through our cases tonight, sorry I kept you all here so long. I have no communication, other than, next month, my son is getting married up in Cleveland on Friday night, and we have a rehearsal dinner on Thursday night for this meeting, so, Devin, you're gonna have to come before me.
Just tell him you have P and Z, and he'll forgive you.
These meetings go much faster when I'm not here, though. So anyway, that's the only communication I got, any committee news?
I went to the parks meeting yesterday, and we got a, a walking tour of the aquatic center, the senior center, whatever that building next to the senior center is, and in addition to other things, the important part, I guess, is like, they're trying to figure out what, what possible new uses could be there. They're having, there was a study underway, and if anybody has great ideas for how that, those spaces could be used, you know, let them know.
Anything else for the greater good?
Just a quick second, on case two, I was wondering if it's possible to get engineering to look at some of that, those traffic conditions that were brought up by the public with, especially the school, maybe at 3:30, and the traffic, if there's any semi-traffic. On the business and the school buses, and see if there's any way we can alleviate some of that congestion, maybe take out some parking signs, I don't know how we get that initiated. Took a while for my brain to catch up, that, that could be a problem. I'm not sure we, we addressed it to their satisfaction.
All right, thank you. Hearing nothing else, I will make a adjournance. Thank you, hold favor.
Aye.